Microphones on.
How's that?
Better, thank you.
So can we take a little call please?
Chair Fletcher.
Yes, here.
Chrisa Blue.
Here.
Chrisa Brassfield.
Here.
Chrisa Dawson is absent. If he arrives, I will mark the time for the record. Chrisa Freeman.
Here.
Chrisa Latassa is also absent. And that leaves us with a total of four commissioners today. That is a quorum for this committee. For staff, we have myself, Jennifer Cleary, we have Community Development Director Kim Cole and Senior Associate Planner Chris Schmidt.
Thank you. Do we need to let our potential Zoom guests know how to access the meeting?
Yes, members of the public are encouraged to join our meetings via Zoom Gov, a secure service that connects you live with no lag time. This meeting is also streamed live on youtube.com/cityofmonterey with a 10 second delay and Comcast Channel 25 with up to a 90 second delay. If you would like to provide public comment, please join the meeting using Zoomer by telephone, making sure to join in time to accommodate delays. To join the Zoom meeting from a computer or phone, use the link or phone numbers on the agenda posted at iSearchMonterey.org. Since the meeting has begun, you'll find the agenda under the recent tab. To join by telephone, dial 833-568-8864 toll-free. Once again, that phone number is 833-568-8864. Then enter the webinar ID, 1619908039. Once again, the webinar ID for this meeting is 1619908039. And if that first phone number doesn't work, there are more listed on the meeting agenda. If prompted for a participant ID, press pound. Detailed instructions for using Zoom are available at monterey.org-publicmeetings. To provide public comment via Zoom, please use the raise your hand function at the bottom of your screen. To provide comments by phone, dial star nine to raise your hand, then star six to unmute when called upon. Public commenters will be announced using their last three phone number digits or the name typed into Zoom. Public commenters will be muted until it is their turn to speak. Please turn off TV or computer speakers or go to another room while connected as background noise interferes with the broadcast. Public speakers will be called upon in order of hands raised. There is a three minute time limit for today's meeting, please stay within that limit. There is no consent agenda with the power outage last week, we had to shift gears and the minutes were not included for this meeting.
And we'll pick public comments, public comments. Anybody wishing to speak to the planning commission on matters that we're not on today's agenda, welcome to do so. There's a three minute time limit. Anybody in the chamber? Any hands on Zoom?
I see no hands raised on Zoom.
Okay, so we move on. So our next item on the agenda, which is item number two. Let's consider 4200 Barney, a use permit application, the 320050 to allow the services used to that veterinary pet hospital. Outdoor mobile magnetic vessel, its energy, or eye community. And allow minimal encroachment of outdoor dog run at slopes of 45%. In variance application, we may 2830046208. Mobile MRI with inside yard setback, a different program required, and we have 33.75, which is proposed, the applicants can reach it soon, and the architects and property owner. He's actually from Priscilla Rosto, Redwood Gulch LLC, his own IR 130 RAES MF in depth zoning district. And that's real general plan designation. And this is exempt from secret requirements per Article 18, section 15301, region 3, and 332, class 122 and 332. There was a lot there, so do we have a staff reports?
Yes, thank you Chair, my name is Chris Schmidt, I'm a Senior Associate Planner for the city and I've been working with the Appken on this project. And yes, it is a use permit for a veterinary hospital outdoor. It is on outdoor MRI trailer. And an outdoor dog run that would encroach in a 25% or greater slope, as well as a variance to allow that MRI trailer in the side yard setback. So the staff recommendation is to adopt resolution approving the use permit development on the slope greater than 25% and variance with conditions of approval. Just some background information, as the chair said, it is a, an IR 130 RAES MF district. So that's our industrial district with a religious assembly overlay, emergency, emergency shelter overlay. As well as the multifamily overlay. It is a site that does require a use permit for animal sales and service uses, which includes the veterinary clinic type use. So the project description is conversion of a approximately 15,000 square foot commercial office building suite. This was previously the Herald Building to an animal services use specifically a veterinary pet hospital called Blue Pearl Monterey, this is a veterinary clinic that actually exists at the Stone Creek Village Shopping Center, which I believe is in the, currently in the city of Delray Oaks. So they would be relocating to this location. In addition, as the chair mentioned in the title, it includes a new MRI trailer that stands for magnetic resonance imaging. And then there's also a generator at the parking lot, as well as an outdoor dog run at the rear of the building. The business would be open 24/7, 24 hours a day, seven days a week, they would provide emergency and specialty services, including oncology, internal medicine, MRI and other types of imaging and other services. Up to 66 animals would be under care based on the floor plans, they show 66 kennels, cages, and then staffing would range from 70, you know, as low as seven employees during the evening and early morning hours. And up to 12 to 25 during the daytime hours, depending on the day of the week. And then, as I mentioned, the animal sales and services requires a use permit, the trailer, MRI trailer requires a side yard setback variance. And the dog run is proposed at a slope requires, a slope greater than 25% requires an additional finding to be made by the planning commission. So here we see kind of a small site plan, apologize for that. And that location would be the left of the two suites you see here, the larger of the two. You see outlined with the blue hash marks is the, the larger of the two is the MRI trailer and generator location. And then at the rear, rear meaning the garden road is at the top of this image, is the dog run. And you can see the kind of green coloring for the turf. So this is an existing almost 19,000 square foot office building. The veterinary clinic would be in the larger of the two units. It's about 15,000 square feet, the other space is, is almost 4,000 square feet and it's an office use. And the site contains adequate parking, there are 58 spaces on site. The office requires 14, the veterinary clinic requires 30 spaces for a total of 44 required. And I'll just quickly go through the floor plan here, here's the first floor with the, if you can see my mouse, the entrance to the business on the north side. The businesses, the, the, the two, two suites have separate entrances, kind of separated by an interior wall and a stairway here. And then there's a waiting room, waiting reception room, and then very, you know, a number of exam rooms and various kind of medical use rooms throughout the building. There's a ICU, a surgery center. And a holding room that's on the south side here, a holding room that's adjacent to the dog run. A CT scan room, isolation room, so, and a triage room at the first floor. And then at the second floor, it's, it's a little bit smaller before plan because it is open to, you can see the note, open to blow on the left hand side there. And there are a couple of different offices and treatment rooms and just a little bit smaller of a space here. So as I mentioned, some of the new outdoor changes to the exterior would be a mobile MRI trailer, you can see that on the left hand side there. There's an existing loading dock that would be infilled to create a more flat surface that that trailer would be built upon. And i- if, if you wanted to visualize the trailer, I, I meant to put a photo of it here, it's, it's really, it's kind of like a, a trailer that would be pulled by a semi truck that they would park permanently and it would contain an MRI unit that the business has said they would move on occasion for maintenance or for certain types of events, but I, I think the intent is really for it to be stationary for the life of the business. And then you can see that diagram on the right hand side, that's kind of the, a little bit closer view of, of that trailer and generator. And then I have on the following slide, a little bit more detail on the dog run since there are additional findings. I will mention that side yard setback for the trailer is, it's a little hard to see, but it's this hashed line that goes along the edge of the building, of the existing building is right at that required setback. So the city's general plan does generally prohibit development in slopes greater than 25% in the case of this project. The applicant is requesting the planning commission make findings to approve this relatively small dog run area that would be used to, to take the pets outside. So they could do their business, as they say, and it would encroach into about 36 square feet of that slope area. And I have a couple of photos of what that area looks like. And some detail on, on the, the type of fencing that would be constructed. And, and so they would, they would build this directly adjacent to a door that's where they're proposing to locate some of the holding areas for the pets. And they would always have staff come out there, really help, help be with the pet while they're relieving themselves and then bring them back inside immediately. So the planning commission has to make four findings, three findings of approval for a use permit. The first is that the proposed use is in accord with the objectives of this chapter and the purposes of the zone. Staff was able to make this finding, the use requires a use permit in the industrial district. And it is consistent with the intent of the industrial district, which generally has industrial and medical office uses and staffs found this, this uses is compatible. The general plan does allow a combination of office and industrial uses, including veterinary and animal boarding uses. Animals are not to be boarded for up to 30 days per the general plan and zoning code requirement. The second finding is that the proposed use and the proposed conditions under which it would be operated or maintained will be consistent with the general plan. Will not be detrimental to the public, health, safety or welfare persons residing or working in or adjacent to the neighborhood of such use and will not be detrimental to properties or improvements in the vicinity or to the general welfare of the city. So staff was able to make this finding, the office spaces on site are separate. The proposal does include sound attenuation inside the building. And it's also a concrete masonry construction building, so there's no expectation that sound from any sort of barking dogs would be heard from outside. And then, as I mentioned, animals that are brought outside would be brought out briefly and would not be unsupervised. The third finding is that the proposal will comply with any specific condition required for that use, in this case, the applicant will comply with the, the required conditions. And there's a number of standard conditions that we require for use permits, there's also one condition that if the business ceases to operate for a period of 18 months, that the variance no longer applies for any sort of new structure that would be located where they're proposing to locate the trailer. There is one specific finding for development in 25% or greater slope areas. It's that generally, this is not the exact text, but it's generally the development must minimize impacts to adjoining property and right of way, and the planning commission must determine that the amount and location of the 25 slope area so severely restricts the development potential that prohibiting, prohibiting development on the slope deprives privileges enjoyed by other properties. Staff made this finding, you know, I think we looked at this, this was a manufactured slope that was really constructed when the building was constructed. It's adjacent, you know, directly adjacent to the existing building, the new dog run is, is relatively small, it would only encroach 36 square feet of that area. It would have virtually no impact in terms of drainage or other effects on right of way, trees or for other habitat, so staff made this finding. And then so the findings of approval for the variance for the MRI trailer are as follows, there are three. That because of special circumstances or conditions applicable to the subject property, including size, shape, geography, location or surroundings. Strict application of the requirements of this ordinance deprives such property privileges enjoyed by other property, properties in the vicinity and under the identical zoning classification. Staff made this finding, understanding that the site does have a lot of topography. And there's really, there are really no great locations on this site that are, you know, directly adjacent to the unit that wouldn't require a removal of a lot of trees and grading and you know, the, the structure itself is, it is a trailer that is proposed to be permanent, so at, at a location of a loading dock. And so staff was able to make this finding because of those reasons. The second finding is that granting the application will not be detrimental or injurious to property or improvements in the vicinity of the development site or to the public health, safety or general welfare. Staff made this finding, there would be virtually no viewer privacy impacts, the, the trailer itself is relatively small in scale, about 400 square feet. It does appear as a semi truck trailer at the location of existing loading dock. And it would be fenced and, and building permits would be required for construction. That would ensure any sort of building life safety issues are avoided. And the last finding is that granting the application is consistent with purposes of this ordinance and will not constitute a grant of special privileges inconsistent with limitations on other properties in the vicinity and in the same zoning district. And as I mentioned, the site has the special circumstance of kind of the location of this suite, topography and trees, tree locations that would really limit locations of a, of a parking pad or any such MRI trailer, so staff made this right. So that concludes my presentation, staff recommends approving the project, I'm available for questions, I think that the applicant is on here, but please let me know if you have any questions.
Questions for Chris, thank you Chris, and you have no question?
What's a mother room?
I'm sorry?
What is a mother room?
You know, I, I had, I would direct the question to the applicant, but I, I thought that it would have been a room that any sort of employee that needed to
Okay, I understand, I understand that, I'm just trying to figure out, a dog bringing a dog, mother.
Yeah, I, I consider that as well, I think that that would, would probably do, be done in one of the other rooms that had, you know, medical equipment in it, but yeah, it's a good question.
The, the fence, the illustrations we show are all straight line, level ground. We have a 25 degree plus slope going down and it's going to be cinder block, is that correct?
So they would actually, if you could see this detail here, they would actually have a, a retaining wall here and the fence would be constructed on top of it. It's, it's a relatively small retaining wall, I could find the dimension for you, but I don't think it was, you know, more than two feet.
Two feet tall? Okay, and you mentioned same zoning district. Would this affect any other zoning district or would other districts be similar?
I'm sorry, could you repeat your question?
That last condition you had, you wrote same same zoning district is, is was at the last end of that first sentence. How would that apply to any other districts that we have a similar consideration?
So I guess the question is really if there was a, if there was another property in this district in the vicinity that they wanted to build a small walkway or, or something similar on a, on a slope like this. You know, we would, I mean, we would want to understand the scope of that project, but that was kind of the premise of how you would compare it to another property, so, you know, properties over there have all kind of been developed on that slope, that slopes down towards Highway 68. And so we looked at it in terms of, you know, would a similar project be able to be approvable on? I think yes.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions?
I got a couple of questions. This is just semantics really, on the second page of the staff report, it says that the project would result in 12.21 home-based work HBW vehicle miles traveled less than the threshold of significance of 12.3 home-based work vehicle miles traveled for whom and from where?
That's, that's a metric that our, our VMT calculator puts out, I mean, it's, it's, those would be the miles traveled from an employee, kind of like an average from an employee that would commute to that.
An employee, okay.
Yeah.
All right. Has the adjacent tenant been noticed and were there any comments?
I did, when I posted the notice, knock on their door and talk to them and they didn't have any issues.
Okay, good to know.
Any other questions? Okay, so we'll open this up for public testimony, would the applicant like to speak? Seeing that there's not a rush to the podium.
We do have some viewers on line and I did see one hand just go up. Matt Nor, signing off, okay?
He's a representative for the property owner.
Perfect, you should have the ability to unmute. Matt Nor, shouldn't, you look like you're unmuted and you can access the planning commission. There's another hand going up, if Matt is not speaking, I can allow Rochelle Mackey to speak.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Perfect, I just wanted to say thank you, I am Rochelle Mackey, I actually represent the applicant, I am one of the owners representatives, so I just wanted to say thank you for your consideration in this. Use variant, and if you have any questions for me, I am on.
Questions for the applicant?
Seems there are no questions, so thank you.
The other hands?
No other hands are raised. Just a reminder. Just a reminder, if you are joined by Zoom, please use the raise your hand function at the bottom of your screen or to provide comments by phone dial star nine to raise your hand, then star six to unmute when called upon. No hands are raising and I do not see. I don't think there are any more applicants who want to talk.
Okay, so we'll close the public testimony portion and bring it back to commissioners for consideration.
Do we want to open public comments for people who are not the applicant?
Let's do that.
Good idea.
Anyone in the audience wishing to speak to this? Any other hands being raised?
Not yet, but just for the viewers at home, the phone number to join is eight three three five six eight 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 six four. The webinar ID is one six one nine nine zero eight zero three nine. To raise your hand via Zoom, there is a raise your hand function at the bottom of the screen. Or if you're joined by phone dial star nine to raise your hand, then star six to unmute. And I'm seeing no more hands going up.
Okay. Now we'll bring it back to commissioners for discussion. Who would like to take a stab at this one? It seems pretty simple and very forward to me.
First of all, I'd like to applaud the applicant for making use of these buildings. That area has been blighted. And I would like to see it back into a light industrial use. And it's a pretty complicated area with the multiple layers of of use. So thank you for that. Aside from that, I have no, I support the objective here.
I supported completely, having been to the veterinary service in Stone Creek with its two parking places. This will afford much more room and it's very impressive. Two floors, CT scan, MRI. This is a great expansion of this business and in a very good location.
As a doggy owner, I'm very happy to see it going in and I am grateful that the level of effort is going to be put into our community to give us that kind of support if needed, so.
So yes, would you like to take a stab at a motion, please?
I move that we approve the use permit application U P twenty-two zero zero five zero to allow animal services use veterinary pet hospital, outdoor mobile magnetic resonance imaging, MRI trailer with and allowing minimal encroachment of outdoor dog run at slope succeeding twenty-five percent and approve the variance application V A twenty-three zero zero four six to locate the mobile MRI within the side yard setback with the findings and conditions as noted in the staff report.
Okay, so we have a motion.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Can we have a vote, please?
Chair Fletcher?
Yes.
Chris or Bluth?
Yes.
Chris or Brathfield?
Yes.
Chris or Dawson is still absent. Chris or Freeman?
Yes.
Chris or Lataca is also still absent and this motion carries with a vote of four and it is appealable to the city council with forms found at the planning office within the next ten days.
Great, thank you. Moving on to our next item on the agenda, item number three, consider nine one two Del Monte Center text amendment application T M twenty-two zero two one seven to amend the Del Monte Center specific plan to eliminate prohibition on professionals or professional and business uses, specifically doctors, including osteopaths and chiropractors, lawyers, dentists, architects and accountants and allow up to five percent of gross leasable area to be used as office, business and professional use. The applicant is Sarah Sarah Kuban. And she's with Walbrunke and Dost and what else do we have? Walbrunke and Dost L L P. Sorry, Henry. The owner is American Assets Trust. This is zone C two S C commercial general plan designation exempt from C Q per Article eighteen, section one five two seven O A. We have staff report, please.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Chris Schmidt, again, Senior Associate Planner with the city. So yes, this is a text amendment application to amend the Del Monte Center plan to eliminate the prohibition on office uses and allow these uses for up to five percent of the gross leasable area. So the staff recommendation is that the planning commission deny the request recommend denial of the request to the city council. So here is an aerial of the Del Monte Center. It is, as the chair mentioned, zone C two S C. The S C overlay is is the city's shopping center overlay overlay and it does require adoption of an S C plan as to serve as the land use document. The land use document for this area was adopted, I believe it dates back to nineteen sixty-two and it has been amended quite a few times since then. But it's generally its purpose is to provide a a shopping center serving use generally retail with a couple of other uses. So again, the applicant has proposed to amend the Del Monte Center plan. This really stemmed from the city received a building permit application for a doctor's office use at at a unit at the Del Monte Center. It was a chiropractic use and at that point, the staff noted that this was not an allowed use. So the owners and applicant did go ahead and apply to make that change to eliminate that prohibition on these uses. These are the uses that are specifically prohibited. Doctors, including osteopaths, chiropractors, lawyers, dentists and architects and accountants. And then the property owner also has suggested that five percent of the gross leasable area be used be allowed to be used as office space. So I've already mentioned what's prohibited. So what really the the area allows, it allows uses that are permitted in the C two zone. And so there are a number of uses that are principally permitted and and also require use permits. You know, for example, there's a gym there that the city did approve a use permit a couple of years ago. But the plan specifically prohibits these uses that I've already mentioned. There are a number of additional uses that were allowed. I can certainly go into that further detail, but a lot of these uses, a lot of other uses are limited to one or two businesses at the shopping center. And then there are a number of additional regulations for fast food service and outdoor farmers markets at the shopping center. So just a little background information. So the applicant did provide a site plan that showed all of the different units and their each of their areas. The Del Monte Center plan does establish a maximum gross leasable area of six hundred and seventy-three thousand three hundred and twenty-nine square feet. What's currently currently being leased is is less than that. I think it's about six hundred and forty thousand. And then there are eighty-three existing suites at the site and they range from approximately five hundred to two hundred thousand square feet, namely the the Macy's is that that really large one. Everything else is substantially smaller than that. And then just I'll note that five percent of that six hundred and seventy-three thousand number is approximately thirty-three thousand six hundred square feet. So that's the request to use about thirty-three thousand six hundred square feet, or at least to allow the use of that amount as office space. So staff's analysis for this was basically that this zone is really specifically intended for a shopping center use primarily retail sales and and these other uses that are permitted. And the the city doesn't support this application because the shopping center is a large sales tax generator and further elimination of retail sales uses in exchange for office and service users would lose that sales tax potential. And then the city also has found that it does contain quite a bit of property that is zoned for office use and really sees no need for additional office space. So again, the city's recommendation is that the planning commission recommend denial to the city council. I'm available for questions and the applicant is here as well. Thanks.
Thank you, Chris. Questions for Chris? Okay, then let's move on to applicant. Henry, how are you doing?
Good. Good afternoon, members of the planning commission. My name's Henry Runke. I'm with Walbrunke and Dost Architects. We have been working with Del Monte Center for quite some time. And on the Zoom call, we have two members of American Assets that obviously didn't travel here today for a lot of reasons. They are are gonna, they're available to answer questions. We've got Chris Sullivan, who is does a lot of the kind of overall leasing and management of the facility. They're down in San Diego. And then Jerry Gamieri, who is Vice President of Construction Activities at a lot of the shopping centers that they own. And American Assets is a American Assets Trust is a publicly traded company. They have multiple shopping centers throughout the United States. And so they really are keen on buying, running, selling shopping centers. And so they will, if you have questions, they can chime in or if they want to participate in the meeting, they can also chime in too. The one thing to to keep in mind is that American Assets has owned the shopping center. They purchased it around two thousand and three. So it's been twenty years since the shopping center was sold. Just give you some perspective, in two thousand and three, the iPhone hadn't been invented. You know, shopping was a completely different thing than it is today. The iPhone came in around two thousand and seven. Amazon was still trying to sell books online and we weren't getting much in the way of the e-commerce that we see today. So the landscape for retail and shopping centers is completely different than it is today. When American Assets purchased the shopping center, they made a lot of changes. They wanted to really improve the shopping center. They were, they spent millions and millions of dollars improving the site including the, I assume I'm not limited. Do I get a little more than that since I'm a presenter?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So they spent a lot on improving the the property. They were able to bring in some new tenants. William Sonoma, Pottery Barn, PF Chang's, which is now going to be the Kona Steak and Seafood. I go through a whole list of different things that they've brought in, but they've made a lot of improvements. So they've been really a good steward of the shopping center for our community. And because of the changes in the shopping center, you know, market today, retail isn't like what it used to be. And what you're seeing is that the the types of things that they're proposing are not uncommon among many of the shopping centers that you might visit. So for example, the idea behind a chiropractor is not to take away business from other chiropractic offices or to reduce sales tax or those types of things. What it is, is trying to bring that kind of experience where people will come to the shopping center for a reason. And while they're there, they need to go to Rite Aid or they need to go to Whole Foods or they need to go and 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 get something over at some of the other stores. And so the idea is to be able to get people back on site. And that's one of the things that makes it really convenient right now for retail shopping online is you can sit in your living room in your socks and you can go and you can order whatever you need. And so what we're trying to do is trying to have a little bit of a mix and you're seeing that much more and the changes. And so what they're asking for is they don't want to turn this into a medical campus. They're not trying to compete with businesses on Pill Hill or with community hospital or anything like that. What it is, is they want to be able to have the flexibility to bring some of these things in. So for example, an accountant could be H and R Block to come in and do some tax returns, those types of things. Those are more kind of quasi retail, commercial. You look at some of the other things that they they might do, you know, the chiropractor, they thought that was allowed. And so when we look at these types of things and we look at the list, you can also see that over the over the years, the list has changed. So it was originally developed in nineteen sixty-three. It had several different amendments and many other things came in. And that didn't mean that those things are still there today. So for example, it's got a whole series of, you know, it's got travel agents and it's got this and it's got that on the list. Doesn't mean we have them there and that's really reflective of the changes in the retail world. So what we're asking for is not to take a large part of the shopping center and able and add some of these uses. What we need is we need the flexibility to be able to specifically target locations that might make sense to add these things in. And if you see the retail world today, it's not like we are displacing retail uses. In fact, we're always looking for more and better retail uses at the shopping center. So you know, adding in a chiropractic location isn't going to take anything away from anybody. So with that respectfully, we would disagree with staff in this one very, very rare instance. And we would hope that the planning commission would consider the different dynamics of the world of retail, of shopping centers and understand the need to be able to provide some of the items that are on this list. We're asking for five percent. I don't know that we'll actually even get close to five percent, but we would like to have that flexibility. So as they come in and they start to program the shopping center for certain things, they can be able to attract and be able to bring in those those small businesses that can come in and actually help to generate some foot traffic in the shopping center. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions and if either Jerry Gamieri or Chris Sullivan would like to chime in, they're welcome to do that too.
Any questions for Henry while we have him up here?
No.
Did your colleagues like to? Are they raising their hands? They are. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Henry.
I see one hand raised. Jay Gamieri, I think.
Yes, this is Jerry Gamieri and Chris Sullivan together. I'm going to allow Chris Sullivan to take the mic. I'm the I T guy for him today.
Hi, everybody. The only thing I can really add to what Henry said after you know, twenty years of operating the center and you guys all live in the community, we've probably replaced three fourths of the tenants there. You know, the retail market's gotten very difficult. I say to my kids, Santa Claus comes every day. He's in a gray van and he'll leave a box just on everybody's porch. Our world has just changed so much and for us to be able to adapt, we need to be looking at some of these service uses that Amazon can't compete with and they bring they bring customers to the center. So I appreciate you guys considering getting this done for us because we've got to keep that center alive.
I have one question for you. Are you still there?
Yes, we're here.
Yeah. Can you tell me what the occupancy is right now at the shopping center?
When I take out the upper floor of the old Mervyn's Building, which is about forty thousand feet and I take out the Macy's basement, which was that furniture store there below Apple, you know, between the two of those, those are about eighty thousand square feet that are vacant. I don't have my books in front of me, but I think when I take those out, I'm in the mid eighties.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, so now we'll open it up to public testimony.
Hi, my name is Fred Dougherty. I've been in Monterey Peninsula since nineteen eighty-seven. I was Joey's religion teacher at Palma and also led him in a business club. And I just want to say Joey's one hundred percent motivated to be like the best chiropractor. He's got sports and when he goes, he's a hundred percent type guy. Before I was teaching religion, I I worked with a national development company with called Landmark Land Company headquartered in Carmel. And I would travel around the country looking at highest and best use. So I just have a little bit of perspective because I have looked at shopping centers before. When I saw this rather small place, I thought the floors lob sided, it looked pretty ugly. And I think it's been vacant for quite a while. Joey has an uncle or a relative who's a contractor and he assures me that they can make it, they can build it up to like something that looks really good because the joint chiropractic has a high standard. One thing alluded to was there's changes going on in the world. And one thing that this type of a business does is, for instance, chiropractic, if you can go get a massage afterward, that, well, there's a massage place right down. Joint likes to be near a coffee shop, because there's a social aspect to it. And they like it to be a sort of a, like a, have a certain type of a club quality to it. Joey is a top chiropractor, and he's committed to be 100%. Third or fourth generation Italian guy. But, but it seems to me for that space, it's not a big space. And, and I thought maybe the parking would be crowded, but then as I watched it over time, it seems like, it seems like it really does fit. The joint basically really wants its offices, which are, which are expanding, and it's a trend, and it's much more affordable than some of these multi-thousand dollar plans that people saddle you with, or try to, you know, immediately. But, but for this space, it seems like a no-brainer. That this could be a use for something that's been vacant, that has a lopsided floor, that to me looked rather ugly. And, and it could be a real service to people of Monterey. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Whitney Davy, again with the Joint Chiropractic. So to tell you a little bit about the joint, it is a national franchise in 40 states across the country. There's over 100 clinics in California, and I think American Assets even has one in one of their shopping malls already. It's really only located in malls and shopping centers to make it more accessible, as others have stated. Another great thing about it is that it's walk-in clinic. So you guys know how hard it is, that our schedules change every day, like even throughout the day. Well, this, you can just walk in. And it's also available in the evening hours. We have jobs during the day. People can't make it. So really, the joint is trying to offer something to the Monterey population that isn't available right now to them. So it's a unique opportunity, and they're also open on weekends as well. There's a Lenscrafter in the Del Monte Mall. I struggle to see the difference between having a doctor of chiropractor and a doctor of ophthalmology. They're both walk-in clinics. There's no x-rays in the joint. It's, it's highly accessible, just as the Lenscrafter is a walk-in clinic. No medical equipment necessary. Again, they're both doctors of a specific field, and it's not invasive what they're doing, right? They're not doing surgery. Veterinarians are allowed at the mall that do surgeries. And we're not doing surgeries, there's no like disposable medical equipment that's required. And it's something that has no waste hazards. So again, we're just trying to help the city, the city of Monterey offer something to its residents that isn't available right now. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. This afternoon, my name is Renee Davy Walker. And I just want to give a little perspective as just a resident of Monterey, and you know, I've been using the mall for I must say, but over 40 years. And it is sad watching the businesses come and go. It is sad when I see the businesses that are sitting there empty, walking through those vacant buildings year after year. The space they're looking at is, I think, 950, 900 square foot, or something like that. I like to go up to there, to the Whole Foods, and to the nail salon, and I look at that empty building over and over and over, and I think, what a great fit this could be. Not only that, I wear a brace on my arm, because I have situation with, you know, my own arms that I would use chiropractic. My own medical only carries for so many visits per year. Then I have to go out and find it or pay for it myself. A clinic like this allows someone like me, where I can walk in without an appointment, have my arm treated, have my neck treated, have my back treated. Oh, and then I can get my nails done, and I can run into Whole Foods and grab dinner. It really does, you know, bring like volume to the Monterey Peninsula residents. Many who are already traveling to the joint that's in a mall in Salinas. And many of my friends are saying, I can't wait for it to be here. I can't always get to Salinas. I can't always get to my chiropractor. I don't have insurance. I would love to see something like this that would be brought in, that can be sustainable at the mall, that we don't walk by those empty buildings anymore. So that's what I'd like to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Dinner for anybody raising their hands?
No hands are raised, and I do believe the only people who have spoken are applicants, but just in case to raise your hand via Zoom, there is a raise your hand function at the bottom of the screen, or dial star nine, raise your hand, then star six to unmute. No hands are raising.
Seems we've taken our testimony from the public, so we'll bring it back to commissioners for consideration. Chris, I have a question for you. Not that, well, it's not that long ago to me, but it is a long time ago. We had a financial services firm where Lala Grill isn't pretty much filled the building up. They didn't pay taxes to the city of Monterey, did they?
I don't, I'm not sure. Yeah. I would expect no, if they had no retail sales.
Okay. Is that the main argument from, from the city standpoint, to not allowing this use, for not recommending to allow this use as the loss in tax revenue?
Yeah, and that, and that there are underutilized office space areas in the city as well.
Okay. Commissioners, questions for staff before we break this? Go ahead.
You know, I was just thinking of Garden Road, and we're looking at light industrial office space there that we're trying to repurpose. And so the idea that, you know, we've got a large fraction of underutilized office and light industrial space does not inspire me to want to move, to give sales space away that the city might benefit. So I mean, I'm not sure about the chiropractic issue specifically, but general sense, I mean, for not having that option there, I think makes sense to limit it to the retail only, or as much as can be provided, since there's so much other space that could be utilized for office-type places in the city that would be productive and that needed.
Just to take off on what Bob has said, there's a space right next to Massage Envy on, is it Fremont or Munras, whatever, right across the street from Chipotle, and right next to Trader Joe's. So these requirements of, you know, a convivial atmosphere where you can go to the chiropractor, and then the massage, and then they get the cup of coffee, Pete's Coffee. There is a specific location that would be great for that. And I support the city's denial, because I think that the reasoning is good. It is true that this shopping list of businesses that are permitted at the shopping center has changed over the years. But all of these changes were pre-2003. The changes dated from 1969 through 1974. That's a long, long time ago, that some of these odd bits were added. So at this point in time, I think that encouraging retail as the shopping center was designed for is our best bet. And then if the applicant feels strongly, I mean, they can apply. If we deny the application, they can apply to the city council, see how they feel about it.
I'll just add, this is, the Planning Commission spoke today as for a recommendation to the council, so they, this will be brought to the council.
Well, there you go.
I remember driving up to what is now Del Monte Center, and watching the dozers, water trucks, and, and other equipment level that area and clear it. At the time, you had to go all over the peninsula to meet minimum services. So building Del Monte Center was a blessing. So when I read that they didn't allow certain things up there, I, I can only assume that the Planning Commission and the city council at that time took those considerations into hand when they made those rules. I've also paid attention to shopping centers across the nation, because a lot of them are the great malls that were in this country are in serious straits. And I watched the town where my wife was from, how what impact building a new shopping center had on the community. It killed the downtown. It literally killed the downtown. And so when I look at the Monterey Peninsula, we had Del Monte Center, and it was doing well. Then Sand Dollar came in. We started to see conflict between communities. Everybody wanted a piece of that pie, but what is your market? That's always the question I have to ask. Can we sustain multiple big shopping centers? And I will grant you that we're, we probably do need to modify that look, but when I look around now, I see that we have all this retail space that's not being utilized, both in the center and around the community. I don't know if I'm ready to throw in the towel on, on Del Monte Center. I know that the people from, I know even from Big Sur come up here to Del Monte Center. I remember people telling me that when I worked down there, that they were spending the whole day at Del Monte Center, because they had to hit so many places. We didn't have that kind of drive before Del Monte Center. I also see that across the nation now, residential units are being put into formal, former shopping centers. I haven't seen that yet. In some places in California, it's occurring. And for shopping centers, but I don't see it here. The other part of it is that we're putting in other businesses. And we do have holiday sales and so forth. It's very hard to find a parking place in Del Monte Center. And I will qualify that always. Parking is just an issue when you're trying to maintain a business as well as start a new one. I don't know where we're going to go.
Well, I, I'm surprised that I'm not in agreement with your, you on this. I, I think our land uses are in such flux right now, and it's not going back to the way it used to be. It's just, it's not going to happen, and I just can't support tying someone's hands, you know, when they're trying to make something work. I'd be curious, you know, when you look back at the shopping center, you know, like when, was it EF Patton, or whatever, the financial services were there. That was quite a large use. And then it's gone. Are, are they asking for any more, anything more than what they've already had over the years at various times? Yeah. I, I would think that would be an interesting thing to know, Henry, when you go to city council with this. Because, and then another good point was made by this young lady over here about the comparative the businesses with the eye doctors and whatnot. It seems like it's, you're allowing it here, but these people that are coming along right now, it's like, no. And I just, I'm not in agreement with that. I, I think there's so much flux going on right now, and we're just all trying to stabilize ourselves from a planning standpoint. And as you know, punitive kind of requirements we have now with developing checklists and whatnot. I just, I just can't in good conscience support something that is going to limit their ability to make something work. I don't think 5% of gross floor area is a significant amount of area. It just isn't in my mind. So that's how I feel about it. Would someone like to take a stab?
Only comment I would make is that both my girls love going to the mall. So I have an 11-year-old and 16-year-old. 11-year-olds are quite a bit wandering around. And it seems to me that it's pretty successful right now. I mean, it's not like there's a lot of underutilized space at the mall. And maybe one of the issues is, is that this request is, covers maybe too much. Maybe if it was just the chiropractor, or, and you can make that case with the optometrist, that maybe just general office space doesn't make sense, because we have so much of it elsewhere that needs to be filled too. When we go to the mall, I mean, it's the mall that we're going to, we're not going to a chiropractor. And I mean, it would be better to see something like a party place where the kids could go, which then the adults could then hang out at the restaurants or something, or you know, some type of entertainment, you know, that would fit some of the mall use. But just in general office space, I think that that might be an issue.
One of the, one of the things that come up in conversations with the public that I have regarding our general use was people ask, I've had two people ask me, would we consider putting residential to the Monte Center? And I asked, what do you mean? And they said, around the periphery. I said, what are you going to do with parking on Thanksgiving, or on Black Friday? And you're going to be able to find a parking place? So there's a, there's a lot of discussion going on in the public about our use. And I just don't know where we're going. I can argue both sides. I really can. But anyone have a motion?
Yeah. Sandy Bach, you guys want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to support 912 Del Monte Center, text amendment, application TM 22-0217 to amend the Del Monte Center PC plan to eliminate provisions of business use, professional and business use, specifically doctors, including chiropractors and optometrist, lawyers, dentists, architects, accountants, and allow up to 5% leased area to be used as office space. Recommend the city council not approve it.
So you're recommending denial?
Denial.
Second?
Second.
Second. Further discussion?
Would eliminating some of those professions change anybody's mind? Like I said, doctors, lawyers, accountants. The full spectrum.
For me, because you know, I, you know, they
They're all professional services.
You know, they are asking for a cap overall for the entire shopping center. And I also view shopping centers as becoming lifestyle centers, and you know, this fits in that in my mind, but you know, it wouldn't change it for me.
Thank you.
So, any further discussion? Jennifer, can we have a vote?
Chair Fletcher?
No.
Commissioner Blue?
Aye.
Presser Brassfield?
No.
Presser Dawson is still absent. Presser Pruven?
Yes.
And Commissioner Latassa is also absent. That is a tight vote.
What do we do?
Yeah, so the motion fails, so I would recommend maybe making the contrary motion to see if somebody changes their vote in that direction. And if not, then I'm going to take a two-minute break and call our city attorney and find out what we do.
I might also suggest, is there, is there a different maximum number that might, in terms of gross floor area, or leasable area, rather, that?
Well, I think this shopping center could make the case for this is historically what we've had. And if they're not asking, in my mind, anything more than they had, that'd be a hard one to.
And, and the applicant did mention that you go to 3%. Which that puts you at about 20,000 square feet?
I could support that.
You know, Chris, the people who have come to speak tonight are mentioning a specific location, the one with the sloping floor. How many square feet is that specific location within the shopping center?
It's just under 1,000. I think 950.
I think I would be willing to support the motion if we just did doctors, dentists, doctors, dentists, and certainly eliminate, where it just says to be a general category is office um business and professional use. Cause that's just has, is pretty vague. I mean, other, I mean, I think I like the idea of the chiropractor. I'd like to support that as um um as it is, but you know, I'm just nervous about the rest of it. And does it set a precedent for other uses?
You mean like a real estate office?
Yeah, something like that, or you know, it seems pretty broad that.
Sorry to interrupt you.
Oh, no, no worries.
You know, there was another point, there was a, a lot of discussion, and I just wanted to clarify about the um the eye doctor's use and that, that what the, what the plan specifically says is dispensing opticians. So I think that there is a retail component to that type of business. I just wanted to clarify that as well. They are doc, you know, they are doctors, I will say that.
They are selling products that yield sales tax, Lens Crafters.
So you would like to see some of those uh categories taken off the table?
You'd like to restrict it to doctors and dentists?
Well, I, I mean, you know, it could fall into Yeah, well, it could fall into like the lifestyle category of uses not. I mean, wh- what do the architects need to be up there? No.
You're not getting to move your offices there. No, but
One of the applicants has a hand raised. I wanted to mention that in case you wanted to reopen the applicant comments, but you would also have to reopen public comments as well.
We're ready to find a compromise here perhaps.
Well, I think the city's point is well made, and um I think that the trouble is on item number eight, where they have this list of, of approved businesses, and it's really hard to argue that these are any different than a chiropractor and a dispensing optician. Um, some of these approved businesses have gone out of business, travel bureau, air, airline ticket agency. They're just, they don't exist anymore. And a title insurance company, what kind of sales tax do they generate for the city? Zero. So there's already kind of a compromise list that's approved. And this is just adding one more compromise. So I don't, it's very difficult to say, okay, these are all grandfathered in, but this one can't come in.
If, if anything, we should be eliminating the items on that list that are obsolete. So.
I don't have a brainy solution for this one.
You always do though. Are you writing sideways on your paper?
I did write sideways.
There you go. She always has it, and she writes sideways.
So I did pull up the text if, if um the commission wants to review what, what Commissioner Freeman is, is uh mentioning here, item number eight, which um as I mentioned, is in the presentation there, this section does limit to uh limit these uses to one or two of these types of businesses. The commission could consider adding this type of use to uh number eight or nine here and not having um a gross, gross leasable area value, uh still eliminating the prohibition, but allowing one or two.
But if it was me, I would keep the veterinary, get rid of everything else, and then the banks and savings loans, and I would keep. I mean, those are, these are obsolete.
Well, Bank of America just now has a teller, has a automatic teller, and they don't have a bank. So.
You know, and then the financial services firm is gone. Um, and, and you know, you got rid of all these and allowed uh lifestyle, more lifestyle type uses and, and bring down the overall, you know, from five percent to three percent. Is there a solution there?
You know, I, just looking at this cockamamie list, I um feel like we should sort of put the chiropractor's application on hold and re- ask the shopping center owner, how many representatives of these types of businesses are there at the Del Monte Shopping Center presently? And if there, for example, if there are no longer any stockbrokers or insurance agents, then maybe we need to suggest a revised list. We don't wanna put anybody out of business, don't wanna kick anybody off the street. But if they don't have a representative there to begin with, maybe this is the beginning of a revised list that will benefit uh the future movement of shopping centers.
And the other thing that would, that would also allow us to have a fifth member to break a tie.
Is that an option?
Give us more information.
So um it could be possible to continue it. I think that's a fairly easy list to obtain from the business owner, and we could bring it back, um potentially just continue it to the next meeting, which is um March twenty-eighth, if that's acceptable to the applicant. And maybe we can even work with the applicant on a revised list and see if we can come with this concept of lifestyle potentially.
Too absent. Uh commissioners will have to
They would need to read the packet, listen to this deliberation, and if they announce that they've done and completed that task, they could vote at the next meeting.
Would need their participation.
Correct.
Well, that sounds great. Can someone make a motion to uh continue this to our next meeting?
I'll make the motion to continue.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion?
And that is what, what Kim said about the, the homework.
Jennifer, can we take a?
Yes, and just for the record, that was continuing to March twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three, with direction to staff to get that list revised for the vote. I'm Chair Fletcher.
Yes.
Chris or Blue?
Yes.
Chris or Brassfield?
Yes.
Richard Freeman?
Yes.
Commissioner Dawson is absent, and for sure, let's pop that, it's absent. This motion is carried, and it are, we will revisit this item on the March twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three planning commission meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hey, uh, on to commissioner comments. Anything?
How many people did this? Did you do this? You failed it, you know, my numbers weren't registered.
But I hadn't seen it in the mail yet. I mean, my wife did.
So it worked for me. Um, I'd be curious, um if you'd like, we're willing to share screens with you and to sort of watch what you're doing and see if we, we have almost seven hundred surveys that have been submitted.
That's good.
Um, I think where people are questioning the most, um um, so the minimum we need to locate is three thousand six hundred and fifty-four housing units, but we're looking at a potential of five thousand seven twenty. We know HCD is gonna require us to zone for more than that minimum um for, to address constraints. So what we were trying to do with the survey is get an idea, if there were a little bit more, do people have a feeling of where they wanna go? So I'm curious where it's getting.
Hung up?
Yes.
Um, just one person's opinion, I thought the video was superfluous and emotional. I thought the cartoon was excellent, the cartoon that guided you through what RHNA means, housing based on where the jobs are. I thought that was excellent. Uh, the pipeline projects was excellent, told us everything that's on, you know, your list right now and all to the good, but the point system was confusing at best. And I expected a number at the end of the test, you know, like you picked this many, but it just said, your such a touch has already been submitted.
So the, the, the number's at the top. So as you pick the numbers, there's a sliding bar at the very top of the survey. So like if you pick two hundred in the Lighthouse area and a hundred, I think eighty-five in Pill Hill, and then if you look at the top, it shows you the minimum and then it shows you the total. So I'm curious what you're looking at, cause, cause I'm sure other people are looking at it the same way, and we can still make tweaks to some things if there, if it's not clear. We are getting a lot of surveys submitted, so I'm curious.
Maybe I'll do it twice. Because that little box seemed to have the same five thousand number in it at the beginning as at the end.
At the very top at the sliding scale? We'll do it with you.
Maybe I just made an elder mistake.
I doubt it.
Okay, informational reports and staff comments?
So we have at the next meeting a wireless application. I think we'll be bringing this item back tonight as well, so it'll be fairly brief meeting.
Sixty-four oh nine.
I believe so. Yes, it's at six hundred, I think it's six hundred Hawthorne. There are so many applications in wireless right now.
I think it's sixty-four oh nine.
Yeah, I know. The code section.
I think it's six oh one wave.
Is it six oh one wave? Okay, it's at the city parking garage. We have an existing facility there, they're proposing, that's, thank you. Yeah, we, the council, I think most notably approved um adopting a resolution for the override vote for accessory dwelling units. That's what you had recommended to them. So they formally published or adopted that resolution. It's now gone to the Caltrans Division of Aeronautics and the Airport Land Use Commission. They have forty-five days under law to submit comments um for council consideration, and it requires a two-thirds vote of our city council to override the Airport Land Use Commission. So we're working on that. I think pretty soon here we'll have SB thirty-five changes you recommended um in front of the council, and those are sort of the two bigger items.
Can I add something?
Yes.
Uh, Chair Fletcher asked about the replacement for our vacant position. We did receive applications. Looks like there were seven applications for PC and three for ARC, and the mayor is conducting interviews with the first round of applicants that were accepted, like priority applications, I believe.
Our next meeting, are we slapping the vice chair?
You can't go on vacation.
I know. Okay, anything else?
Good memory, we've always put Terry back in there. He's trying to make up his time.
For his six months, yeah.
Planning office update, that was, okay. Well, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.